Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for November 27, 2023. Come on around. Tonight's agenda, we just have a few items: the old powerhouse design and Main Street Cabin update, and then a discussion on legislative policy agenda. I think we're going to start with the first item first. All right. Hi, Rob.
Good evening.
How you guys doing? I'm Evan Pletcher, Capital Asset Project Manager, here with Rob Shover, Capital Asset Director. Yeah, thanks for taking the time to discuss some updates on the old powerhouse project and having a discussion on the final scope of the project. So our goal with this work session is we are seeking feedback and direction on the final scope of the powerhouse project. Just a little bit of background, since we last met, the design team has completed the conceptual design for the powerhouse. We are in for land use approvals, and we have received pricing based on the conceptual design packet from Shaw Construction. That said, the pricing estimate we received exceeds the existing budget authority, and we need to make some decisions on what scope we want to include in the final scope for this project. There have been a lot of discussions about adding scope to this project, including a public gathering space, and we'll get into that in a minute here. But we, given the pricing that we received, we wanted to review, or we took another look at the base scope of the project, and we were able to, I think, shave it down a little bit. However, there are some new items in this base scope that were not included in the original base scope for the project that was developed back in 2017. So interior base scope, as we see it today, include adding an elevator and some ADA accessibility improvements, replacing the interior sewer line, envelope improvements to improve the thermal efficiency, a very light touch to the interior space for office use, talking more or less paint. And the new items that were not in the original base scope are all electric, mechanical, electrical plumbing systems. And based on some destructive testing we just did, we need to do some pretty significant structural reinforcement to the building. It is, the building is basically an unreinforced historic four-brick-wide configuration right now, so it needs some additional structural support. So exterior base scope for the project includes some select masonry preservation, tuck pointing, et cetera, a brand-new roof system, waterproofing, and thermal improvements throughout, replacement of all non-historic windows, removing the trees that are currently growing in and around the immediate foundation, finishing the refurbishment of the historic windows, and replacement of the sewer line that runs through the parking lot. So this is actually the existing main-level floor plan, just threw this in here to give you the sense that nothing's really changing in this base scope, with the exception of us moving the kitchenette to another location so the elevator can go more or less where the kitchenette is on this main level. Upstairs, to the left of the mechanical room, there, that is where the elevator would come out on the upper level. But otherwise, this largely stays more or less the same, same wall configurations, et cetera. So kind of moving on from this base scope to what we call, what we're calling the complete project scope. And as you know, as the project has progressed, we have heard an interest in including additional design and programming criteria for the powerhouse. This includes a community gathering space on the main level of the building and improved landscaping. So in order to create a public gathering space with increased capacity, we need to make some changes to the building. The largest change that is necessary is relocating the bathrooms and enlarging them. And if we do that, we need to kind of reclaim some of that space that we're losing from the shop and office space area. So with that said, looking at the complete project scope interior for the project, the, some of the, some of the ways that we're going to kind of better use our space are enclosing the existing porch on the parking lot side of the building, doing it greatly improved shop attic storage space with a permanent staircase into that space to make it easily accessible. And some of the other improvements you would see with this complete scope would be adding that operable opening in the south gable of the building, that's adjacent to the river side of the building, a new kitchenette and secure storage that would be ready to be converted into a catering kitchen and event storage space if the decision was made to use that downstairs space for public gathering, exposing the interior masonry in some areas, and some other historic storyboard and photos to just kind of give a better history and understanding to those using the space of the old powerhouse. So exterior complete project scope, that's going to include improvements to the adjacent connection to the landscaping, including some significant landscaping improvements to the landscaping area throughout the entire entrance to the John Denver Sanctuary, adding a freestanding storage and trash structure, this is unconditioned storage space, enclosing the existing porch, as I mentioned before, resurfacing the parking lot, and also adding a dormer upstairs to maximize the office space functionality of the upper level. Going into the floor plans here, so in that upper-left corner, so the existing is on the up, the top of this slide, and the proposed is on the bottom. In that upper-left of the proposed, you can see an added exterior storage and trash enclosure, that reconfiguration of the asset workspace, the larger bathrooms on the top and bottom of that asset workspace, larger mechanical room, elevator, and using the space where the existing bathrooms are right now for a kitchen slash catering kitchen and storage slash gathering space storage. All of the walls and partitions you see in the large, the large open space there are partition style, nothing is permanent, so there would be that flexibility to go to a public gathering space. All the mechanical systems, et cetera, would also be designed and ready to accommodate that increased capacity. So upstairs, again, existing is on top, proposed is on the bottom. The, the existing for the second level is, is more of an attic space, so the proposed for the asset storage space is, is a significant improvement and square footage improvement to create space for storing of materials and things that we need for that side of asset management. The office space area, you can see it's, it's got some pretty substantial improvements in terms of functionality with those added private offices and just increased office workstation space in the middle of the area. Should there be an interest, we also looked into some potential additional sustainability measures that we could take, and this would include adding a geothermal system, so drilling wells in the parking lot to offset the heating and cooling needs of the building, as well as installing the infrastructure for, or installing EV charging infrastructure for a city fleet EV location. Okay, so jumping right into it, what does this look like financially? So the project has a current lifetime budget of 4.445 million with $3.7 million available for construction. So this number was updated in 2022 based on the original project scope. And with some of the additions that are needed for the base project scoped, which includes that all-electrical MEP system, structural improvements, also an increase in construction costs even from last year, we are looking at a base project scope of five to six and a half million dollars. What that looks like would be an additional two and a half million dollars requested from council when we bring the GMP for construction, for consent. And that is the base project scope. So complete project scope, so that's programming the space to be able to have a public gathering area downstairs. Complete project scope's now looking to be six and a half to nine million dollars for construction. So that would be an additional 5.3 million dollars requested from council. Sustainability measures are on top of that, which would look at 800 to 1.3 million dollars. So also an increase in operational costs, just with the complexity of the geothermal system.
Can you center on that right now? The two sustainability measures, geothermal and EV car chargers, where, how's the money split between those two items?
It's almost all for the geothermal. The, you know, and we'd be tearing up the parking lot anyway to do the geothermal, more or less, so we can get that infrastructure in the parking lot for EV at a, at a pretty low percentage of that overall cost. If you would like to see a breakdown for EV-specific with no geothermal, we can get that number to you.
I probably am. I don't know about the rest of council, but I probably am. I don't know about geothermal and how it really works and how efficient it is here and stuff, but yeah, I would want to know. I mean, I'm, I'm just having heartburn about continually escalating costs. I also, I thought the last time we left this conversation, we were planning on moving forward with it for the use of it as office space because we needed that. So, so are you saying that it'll be available for community space now or in the future?
No, if council finds another alternative, suitable alternative for the needed office space, that you can revert this back to community use. So we were directed by council to upsize the mechanicals and to consider in the layout, a, the least intrusive way to make that happen.
Okay. Ward, comments?
Yeah, everything I've read about geothermal is that this is too small of a building to really be efficient. And so I'm wondering, are you looking at a closed-system geothermal? You're looking at trying to find hot water down below, or I'm just, I mean, I like the idea of geothermal, but I think for this building, like campus-wide, and it, everything I read about it is that, that's a scale that makes sense. So curious about the geothermal and what your exploration has been on that.
So we have a new geotech report, and we have some conceptual designs from an engineer. It is, it would be a small closed-loop system. Drilling the wells is a risk. I mean, you don't know how deep you're going to go, you don't know how many, how many you're going to need. So that's, it's just, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's complete risky, but it's an open-ended cost that you don't really, it's hard to pin down.
I am skeptical, although I love the idea of geothermal. I'm really skeptical about putting that kind of money into an unknown on a building this size. It just doesn't seem to, it'll never break even, I don't think. Thanks.
Do you have more presentation you want to go through on, on the powerhouse?
Just, just one more slide here. So this is just alternatives. So should none of the last slide appeal to you, we can, we can see what we can accomplish within the existing $3.7 million budget now, and other items that we need to do on the building, we will budget in the out years. So I think overall, that's going to lead to a longer construction duration and an increased cost for whichever project scope we decide to proceed with. Also, that looks like the facility being unable to be used for city or public use for longer. So that's the alternative.
Yeah, I'm, I think for the majority of council expressed interest in having public spaces available at the powerhouse, and that's why these additional mechanicals were put in. There was a desire for that. I wasn't supportive of it, but the council is supportive, and I would, I think it makes more sense to put in the mechanical now with the hope or possibility that some of that downstairs space that is, could be flex space, could be converted into community gathering space. And it seems that it always is, it takes longer and it's more expensive to do it in phases than it is all at once.
Thanks, Ward. John?
Can you go back to the previous slide, please? One more, I'm sorry. Yeah, under the added sustainability measures, it says ongoing operational costs will increase. Could you explain why that is?
Just given the complexity of a geothermal system, there's increased operational cost. There are less vendors who are willing or able to work on these systems, so they generally charge more, and just more cost and time associated with staff maintaining the system.
I gotta say, I'm excited about it, but I also have questions. Is there any way for us to review the, the data from when there was some drilling done over by No Problem Bridge that the, the city, I think?
We can look into that.
Because as I recall, it wasn't promising results over there. Again, we're in a different location, but they're not that far apart, really.
And could you, yeah, there's some folks in your department who are familiar with this. Rob, who can help fill you in? My recollection is that the, the well for this building was drilled. Fill us in a little bit about that piece, because that's more recent data.
So this, this building is using the water source underneath the building as geo, which would not be the case at the powerhouse. We, we would be drilling a well. We did not drill a well here. When they dug the parking garage here, they were going down and they hit water, and there's perf pipes all over, running underneath the bottom of the floor of the parking garage that gather into a basin. So we're using that water to either suck energy out of it or dump energy into it. So the source was already there. We have monitored it. We know it's a reliable source. We know the temperatures don't fluctuate. So the risk of the geothermal system here, there's a lot of unknowns that were, were taken away because of that. So it is different. There's some other complexities that go along with using water, like a whole lot of water, that are a challenge now, but the risk, you know, heading into it, there's, there's not so much unknown. The source was there.
Good to know. Thanks.
Yeah, these are, these are deep air wells. We're using the heat of the earth. We're not using water for the geothermal.
Thanks. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Rob. I have a number of questions. If I understood this correctly, there was four and a half million dollars of, of spending authorized on this, leaving 3.7 million available for construction today, or 4.45 to be more specific. What has $700,000 been spent on, or am I misinterpreting that?
So we have a general contractor preconstruction. We have a design team signed up. We have third-party, like we've done, we commissioned the geotech report, and we have a CMA signed up through the end of the project as well. So it's committed, we have not expended that money, but it's committed, if that makes sense.
Well, I think you have expended some of it, like-
We have expended some of it. We have not expended $700,000.
Got it. You talked about the surprise structural requirements. You have a four-wife brick structural system for this building, which was not uncommon at the time. What's driving the new structural requirements?
Roof load. So we've got to take the loads from the roof, and basically, the way we're looking at it, we're going to have to dig, put a new grade beam in there, new footers. Maybe we'll be able to do something with grout injection or piles, but significant structural foundation work.
And what's ultimately driving that is we're touching enough of the footprint of the building that we have to bring it up to this certain level of code.
Structural code requirements.
Thanks. Could you talk more specifically about touching the footprint of the building? What, what parts are we touching and why?
You know, anytime we really dig in behind the walls, we've, we're, that, that is considered disturbed area inside the building, and once we exceed 50% disturbed area within the building, it kicks in this structural requirement.
I'm not familiar with that part of our code at all.
We're doing enough renovation, extension of renovation, but we have to bring it up to current code, the whole facility.
Or current, existing building code. It's different than new construction, but it's-
But the only part of bringing up to code that I'm sort of familiar with, and that doesn't mean it doesn't exist, I'm not doubting you, I'm just not familiar with it, is, is the demolition threshold, the 40% threshold. Am I confusing this with something I shouldn't be?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, we'd been told 50%, but it could be a 40% number for demolition.
So, if we're going in there and doing this full renovation, the building's gonna be gutted. I mean, that's everything inside it to do that.
I appreciate that, Rob, but the way the 40% calculation works in our code here, assuming that that's what you're discussing, that triggers demolition, and these may be two different things, maybe Jen knows here, is based on what you're manipulating on the exterior surfaces of the building, nothing to do with what you're gutting on the inside.
So, you're, you're, you're talking about two different things, I believe. So, the demolition you're talking about is the exterior membrane pieces and parts of the building. You hit that 40% and you have to bring up the building to zoning requirements. So, if your floor was over what's allowed by the underlying parcel, you have to reduce your floor and your rebuild. If you had a building that wasn't meeting setbacks, you hit that threshold, you have to meet setbacks with your, your remodel reconstruction. What they're talking about is actual building code requirements, where the level of remodel on the interior would require upgrades in the building based on building code.
Got it. Thanks. I, I'd love to learn a little bit more about that. You know, what I'm getting at is, is we have a beautiful historic structure there. I, I don't want to undermine it literally and figuratively, especially if we don't need to. So, is there something specific that we're doing that's driving that, or is it the totality of the project? It sounds like the latter is your answer, but I just want to confirm that. I, I think Evan also mentioned that the addition of space to the asset management attic is a major cost driver? The, the second floor space?
So, if we do what we're, we're calling a complete scope, right, we have to enlarge the bathrooms. We're losing much of our storage space doing that. That storage space down there, we use it to store tools, materials, anything that comes into the city here, car, electric car chargers. If we receive something here, it comes down to the asset management and we store it down there. We, I don't, really don't think operationally, it's great for us to give up that space. So, we're trying to just maintain the space we have. We're putting in, as we lose that space from the bathrooms, we're gonna put in some attic storage up top. And then also, yes, the outside unconditioned storage does drive up the cost of this, because it's being, it's, it's gonna have to be retained. It's going into the hill.
This is the trash building addition?
The trash building and storage, correct. Yes. And it, it is a significant cost driver, yes.
Got it. So, it, it, you know, philosophically, I'm not really keen, as I've mentioned up here before, about city offices being in this building. I think it'd be a shame to commit this space, either temporarily or permanently, to city offices. I'm even less keen on it being used as storage space. I think that the city has a variety of other spaces that could be used to replace that space, including at, at, down on Power Plant Road and, and elsewhere. I, I think we need to think creatively there and, and try to find replacement space, because I think this is just too valuable of, of a asset for our community from a use standpoint, not from a, a operations standpoint. And that being said, if, if we could remove that asset storage, asset headquarters, whatever it's called, functionality from the program, I don't know that you would need the addition. I think you could put the trash storage and stuff where asset currently is, so that might help reduce the costs there significantly, avoid that retaining, retaining effort. So, I guess I'd ask others, are you interested in removing that part of the program and, and avoiding having to build that addition?
I think if there is storage space at the streets down on Power Plant, I'd be interested in that if, if there's spare space that could be used instead of storage here.
Yeah, I, I think just to clarify a little bit, this isn't long-term storage. This isn't like file storage, stuff like that. This is storage for short-term use, for things that are coming and going frequently. Pieces and parts that are being shipped to the city, stuff that we need for operational needs. So, nothing's really in there, sits in there and lives in there.
Yeah, totally appreciated, not trying to discount the importance of it. I just don't think it should be here.
So, well, that we can, if you want, a majority of you want, we can take a look at what's on Power Plant Road. I do expect limitations from semis being able to safely enter and exit within that campus. So, that is a consideration for the council, is that you would be putting big rigs through the west end to make and drop off those deliveries, because we also have to consider the bridge rating down there. So, there, there are some definite limitations, but we certainly can take a look at it and get back with you. I honestly, I thought my head can't think of any space down there to do this in. Yeah, the people who are down there more regularly are shaking their head no right now, but we can go walk it again for sure and, and check for you.
Yeah, I, I'm not, Sarah, I'm not intimately familiar with that building. It just seems like there may be an opportunity there. But what about the golf course? What about the, the parks department offices on Cemetery Lane? What about, you know, something else? I, I don't, I don't know, but I'm, I know you guys do. So, let's just think creatively. If we can remove that function from what could be a really high-value, high-impact building for the public, I'd like to explore doing that. I, I don't think it's like a sacred cow that we have to keep in this location. And, and if there's a way to avoid bringing semis all the way down there in the first place and keep it a little further out of town, even better. Environmental stuff I want to touch on. You know, I think it's important for everyone to remember that the work that we're going to be doing to this building is already held to a very high environmental code standard. We have some of the highest, most stringent environmental requirements of building codes anywhere in America, if not the world. This additional stuff is irresponsible to spend on, if you ask me. Both from the high-performance electric MEP systems to the geothermal, to the EV charging, unless we can get that subsidized significantly, I, I just not, I'm not supportive of any of it. Every MEP engineer I've ever spoken with, and this is beyond my scientific knowledge by a, by a long shot, but every, every MEP engineer I've ever spoken with has told me that the laws of thermodynamics mean that electric heat will never be sensible compared to gas heating, especially in larger spaces. Again, it's beyond me, but I, I cannot support an all-electric heating system or cooling system here. I, I, I think we should use our very stringent energy codes and do what's responsible fiscally under those codes. Thanks.
Thank you. Ward? Yeah, we recently had touched on this discussion with the yellow brick and replacing, I think, the boilers there. And as I recall, there, there's gas going into that building now, but we chose to do electric, even though, are we on gas or did we do?
We went with very high-efficiency gas boilers for that facility.
The same with the red brick?
We haven't done that for the red brick yet, but the yellow, you're thinking of the yellow brick. And we did a comparison between gas and electric boilers, and the decision was made to go with high-efficiency gas boilers.
And those boilers, as I understand it, are about 95% efficient?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of no new gas going there, but for the size of the building, I, I have to agree with Bill that it doesn't seem that electric is, I mean, the operational costs, as I recall, are a lot higher for electric than for gas.
So, the operational costs will increase and the existing boiler in the old powerhouse facility is maybe 60% efficient.
Thanks. Sam, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Not this, I have one. Just talking about finances, we obviously are talking about the armory renovation. And I looked at, you included in the packet, the budget we have in the asset management plan. Is more money towards this, less money towards that, or putting us in a worse financial situation?
It's all coming from the M fund.
It's all coming from the same fund. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but the fund is healthy right now, but yeah.
Yeah, it's your priorities, council, for how you want to see those dollars executed for the community based upon your infrastructure maintenance responsibilities. So, a lot of things come out of that fund. These buildings come out of it, your roads come out of it, your curbs, your sidewalks. It's really how you, how you decide and, and you can review that again tomorrow when you're asked to consider approving the budget.
Like our alleyways?
Yep, it's all the same pot of money.
Yeah, I, I think that's really important to me when it comes to this discussion, especially since I think we or I have a vision for the armory, but I don't necessarily have a vision for the old powerhouse at this point. So, doing the complete overhaul, the public gathering space seems lovely in my mind, but I know there was a huge debate over that in 2016 I was reading all about recently. And allocating millions of dollars to that just to end up in a new debacle seems a tough pill to swallow right now when there is other things to use our money on.
Thanks, Sam. All right. There's a couple of questions in front of council members tonight. We've heard a little bit of input. What I'm hearing from council is, is choking on the larger number. And this comes down to a couple of different items. We have questions about the energy efficiency upgrades. Number one, geothermal being used in this spot, I don't think we have a comfort level with that. The, the EV charges, I think, is a small part of it. And something that we'd probably want to see here, a charger or two at this location. Bill brings up some of the construction items, the storage and what that adds to the complete project scope. So, we don't really have a, you know, kind of a menu of, of opportunity here. But what I'm hearing is that there's just not necessarily that much support for getting this project up to six and a half to nine million dollars, that a base project scope is, is where council members are more leaning. In your, in your alternatives, you recognize that it's possible for you to take the 3.7 and go figure out how to spend it best. I think that there's more leeway than that, but I don't think that we're getting above the base project scope. And I say that with the caveat that we don't have a menu of items, so I don't know exactly what comes off and what, what stays. Questions for me, things like resurfacing the parking lot. Necessary after construction? Not necessary. I don't know. The new entryway on the west side of the building, you know, what does that do to the, the construction cost? I don't know. I know that the dormers going in on the roof is a, a great benefit, because it allows for greater workspace. So, that's something that, you know, right now I'm supportive of, recognizing that that's additional costing. Anyway, with that information, you know, I think that we're hesitant on some items. We want to give you the leeway to work towards a base project scope, but there are different questions around what makes up the, the five to six million dollars that we're talking about. That's what I'm hearing first. Bill and then Ward.
The one thing I'd like to add is I, I do think it's important to me, it, it is important to me to have the future ability to use the, the main level as some kind of community space. So, so, and I believe that's in the complete project scope. Some of the other stuff that's in the complete project scope is not that important to me. So, my request would be, can, can we go back? Let's examine removing some of this asset storage space elsewhere. Eliminate the need for the addition. Let's carefully study if there's something that's driving some or all of the structural improvements that we may be able to avoid and, and try to bring that budget number down. But to me, it is important to have the ability to use that main floor space for a community use in the future.
Thank you for that. Ward?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think the EV charging is well worth it. I'm not in favor of the geothermal. And I have a question on the gas or electric. And are we, one of our goals is greenhouse gas and the environment? And are we, do we feel that the added cost of that is worth it for the amount of greenhouse gas that we may be eliminating in the, the added cost of operations? I, I think structurally, the roof is what's calling for the structural work. And the storage, one other item to consider is if we do find the storage somewhere else, there's still gonna be transportation back and forth between the short-term storage and where it's needed. It seems to me as though this is a good location for it, but if there are other opportunities that can drive the costs down that don't have negative impact, say for added vehicle traffic through the west end to drop stuff off and bring it to where it's needed. So, for me, I guess the biggest thing, question I have is gas or electric? And I think Bill has, has supported the build-out to use for community use in the future. I'm curious what the rest of the council feels like that. I thought Tori and John were both in favor of that in previous work sessions. But that's, that's an added expense, but if that's what the council wants.
John?
Yeah, overall, I think the, the design is great. It, it allows flexibility for what we really need, which is office space for our city workers and what the community apparently would like, which is a community space. So, we can have both. As far as the geothermal goes, I, I really like the idea. I would like to know more about it and see how that works. And I think being the city of Aspen, we should be setting an example. And I think this is a good starting point for an all-electric MEP system. I fully support all-electric on this. Thanks.
You know, when you say that the community wants community uses, I don't, I don't know that there's been a, a survey on this property. The, the question that was let out to the voters years ago, which was about the armory, was identifying the armory as community use space. I think it goes without saying that a community would want community useful space everywhere or anywhere. So, you know, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit, because I was a proponent for the powerhouse plans as they came through before, that were rejected by a, a council seated at that time. I'd want, I thought that this was a great opportunity for community space, but we're about to embark on $25 million renovation of a downtown space for exactly that use. Can we do both? I don't know about that. And so, I'm, I'm really caught here, because, you know, I would have loved for this to have gone that direction, but we, we've made other plans for something located in our core. So, I, Ward, to be clear, the last meeting that we had, I supported office space going in there with a future ability to be used for community space, if that was something that could be done. Again, I don't see a menu list of items to know what's costing what, what the upgrades are. I mean, I remember us talking about power upgrades that would need to happen in order to do some of that stuff. So, I, you know, I don't know what's driving the cost. I don't know what it, what, just the change to a community space means for this and what in, the financial impacts that have. So, I'm kind of making my, I'm, I'm offering my opinion without any information on the financial side of it. I just don't know those answers. So, you know, I've, I recognize that right now, what we want to do is we want to move stuff out of the armory so that we can start working on the armory. That's, that's what I think is the priority here. So, I, I'm really for just doing what we can in order to get there. And apparently, this building needs more work. It's currently used as office space, but it needs some upgrades. So, like I said, my support right now is not for a complete package. I have questions around the environmental upgrades. I don't know enough about the MEP system to say if this is a good spot for it or not. Structural reinforcement, probably a good idea. I mean, if there's something we're gonna do, let's at least make it sure the building stays standing. But without, you know, really getting into some harder details, I can just give some broader policy direction. And for me, that policy direction is, I'm not looking at spending $8 million on this building renovation. I think that we can accomplish what we're trying to accomplish there for less than that. So, I'm, you know, I'm supportive of base project scope. And I have questions about the additional requests and add-ons. So, that's where I am. Sam, we need some opinion about where you, where you think you'd like to see this project moving forward.
Yeah, I, I think for me, it's similar to what you just said, as far as allocation of funds is a big deal to me, especially without a vision for this place. If it gets the armory moving quicker, that'd be great. I think I'm at base scope with the hope that if we, if there is a vision for a- I think I'm at base scope with the hope that if there is a vision for a public gathering space, that can be upgraded from there easily enough to maybe open that west side of the building later on. I sort of picture a more informal public gathering space than a super formal one, so I hope it'd be easier that way, especially to please as many people as possible for this.
We cannot do a public gathering space within the base scope. So that's why we have, and apologies if not doing an à la carte menu made it more challenging. We were trying to simplify the conversation. But the, the base scope is kind of that bare-bones scope. Doing the complete scope is where you can have that ability to have the public gathering space.
So the direction given to us by resolution was to ensure that the outdoor space could accommodate public gathering on the deck on the west end, I'm sorry, east end of the building. And so that is the extent of what's, is a rebuild of that deck surface, if it needs it, is the extent of what would be included in your base package. Right? And so that's, that is meeting the intent and the direction we were provided back in 2020, 2020 or 2021. I can't remember when that resolution was passed. So what I, what I definitely hear then is, is that you're not able to give direction tonight and that you need additional information, and you want cost estimates in more detail before you're able to provide direction to me.
So if it, if it helps drive the conversation, the biggest piece of this pie is the electrical and mechanical is $2.7 million. That is a big decision.
Is that a premium rub, or is that, so if we were to do traditional systems allowed under today's code in Aspen, is it 2.7?
No, it's much less expensive. If we were to replace-
Some portion of the 2.7.
It is, yes, it is some portion of the 2.7, but that is a major cost driver, just straight up. The all-electric system is, is big boxes and is a full upgrade to the electrical service there.
So to reiterate, here's the very specific direction that I would give. I don't think I can give final direction tonight, but I would say, traditional MEP systems, let's go look back at the structural reinforcement requirements, ensure that they are absolutely necessary. You know, this, this four whites of brick has been holding up the roof with the same snow loads, maybe increased, maybe, maybe more snow loads than we have today for a long time. So I understand there's new insulation and there's weight associated with that, but I'd like to just make sure that we're doing the right thing there, and I'd also like to work, look at relocating that, that storage space so that we can avoid having to do the addition. I'm not supportive of geothermal. I'm not, you know, the electric car charger or two, especially if subsidized, I'm, I'm fine with. I don't think it's necessary here, but I'm fine with it. And I do think it's important to maintain the flexibility for the community use space. My use case for that, that I would envision is, you know, where else are Aspen residents going to have a 40 or 60 person gathering, particularly in the winter, whether it's for a small wedding, a kid's birthday party, a confirmation, a bar mitzvah, something like that, maybe nonreligious. There's just not affordable options for doing that kind of thing, and I don't think the armory is going to offer that sort of private space for that large of a gathering. So that's, that's my vision for what that community use space could be in the future. That's why I'm interested and passionate about it. It's not, it's not the tap house that caused a lot of uproar in 2016 at all. You know, it's something that could be reserved for, for events with some guardrails on it and could be, I think, a real asset to the community. So that's the specific direction that I would give.
Yeah, Ward? Yeah, I'd like to know what the delta is to make it. I mean, you said the base would not allow for public use. In order to have public use, we have to increase some of the AD, the bathrooms and some other items. So what I'd like to know is what is the delta between doing it now or retrofitting it later? From, from what I'm hearing, I think Sam and Tori are both leaning towards doing base now with the idea that we could retrofit it later. So I'd like to know what the delta is there.
And speaking of delta, delta for not an all-electric MEP system versus what the regular one would be, the cost saving on that. The finances of the project matter a ton to me because of all the other wish, the giant wish lists we have for the use of this money, including what the armory is and the vision we have for that. So I would like to save cost on-
The final direction, we just did a little bit of value engineering up here, but, you know, we can only go on what we see. So, yeah, it sounds like we'd like to see some cost breakouts and see where our opportunities lie.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I guess that à la carte would almost be easier, if not longer, conversation.
You know, we try to avoid that. It's not an easy thing to make an à la carte menu. It doesn't work that way.
No, I know.
So.
So council, in terms of timing, I'll double check if you have any room left in your work sessions this year. Otherwise, this is probably going to be February of 2024 before it comes back to you, based upon scheduling. And I just want you to know that we'll delay the kickoff of what work we're doing.
Is there a way to do this with an info-only memo and a email response?
I need direction. No, absolutely not. I cannot take direction from you via email.
We could get an information memo and provide direction at a meeting sooner than February.
We can see about putting it on December 12th, regular meeting.
Okay.
I'll have to talk with the team whether they can be ready in two weeks.
Thanks a lot. Okay. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Next item for us tonight, we're going to talk a little bit of legislative policy agenda.
Don't we have Main Street?
Main Street cabins next.
Oh, sorry.
I can't get back my, I need to share my screen, I can't.
Do you want me to connect to mine? Good. All right, well, while Rob works on the technical difficulties, I'll just get started. My name's Jen Phelan. I'm the Development Manager for the City of Aspen Asset Department, and tonight we will be talking about the Main Street Cabin. The request before council is to get direction on whether to proceed with conversion of the Main Street Cabin to two affordable housing units that would be within the city's inventory. Just some background for anyone in the audience who doesn't know much about this project or who's watching virtually. This building, the Main Street Cabin, is on a 3,000-square-foot lot on Main Street. It's within the Main Street Historic District, and it's a Aspen modern landmark because the front part of the building is a panabode. That was built in the late 1960s, and then a rear addition was built in the late 80s. And this originally housed Mountain Rescue. The panabode was their original home, and in the 80s, they expanded because they needed some more space. Once their new building was constructed out by the AABC, city offices moved into this building as the city owned the property. And we've been looking at converting this building into affordable housing. With past council direction, we've had a number of work sessions. The direction provided was to turn this into a duplex and provide as many bedrooms as possible. We had looked at a couple of different configurations, and the final direction was use the existing Staffs moved forward with the design, and we've gained entitlements for this project. We've also completed a cost estimate, and that's what we want to talk about tonight. The estimate has been based on the work so far. We've undertaken architecturals, civils, mechanical, and structural work. And I think we can move on to that. So the overall budget for this project, and this is the floor plans for the conversion, it shows the panabode basically being turned into a one-bedroom unit, a side entry on the west side of the building with a essentially kind of mudroom up to a stairwell where the main part of the second unit would be on the rear addition, would be a two-bedroom. And then the existing garage on the ground floor would be a shared garage, which would have additional storage, mechanical, and two parking spaces to accommodate each unit. You can go to the next one. So the overall budget is $2.1 million, and the cost estimate we received from a third party was for hard costs and contingency being basically $1.86 million. What that didn't include was any escalation from October 2023 to when we would get started on construction, and it did not include any soft costs. And so Table 1 shows the percentage of the overall $2.1 million budget. So with the original hard costs and the contingency the consultant proposed, we'd be looking at approximately, God, I can't see anything anymore, 88, right? Yeah, 88 point, yeah, almost 89% of the budget. Yeah, that's much easier. What staff is looking at is, we've estimated soft costs at about $180,000. We have spent some money, obviously, on design. We've projected building permit costs, school land dedication fees, continuing some design work that we need to do. And we think the soft cost will be about $180,000. And then what we are asking and interested in seeing is increasing the contingency to this project, which would increase the overall budget. This is an existing building. Original construction was in the 60s with an addition in the 80s, and although we have had structural engineers on board, they've been inspecting the property, doing a visual assessment, you never exactly know what you're going to find until you dig into the building. And if everything goes smoothly, we might not need that contingency, but if there's any problems once we start digging in, we feel like a higher contingency, basically 20% of the budget would be appropriate. So we'd be looking at basically more in the contingency, and that makes the budget go over about $214,000. And so what we're here tonight to talk about is whether you're interested in moving forward with this conversion, considering the amended budget recommendation, and we can talk about this a little bit more. But regardless of whether anything's done going down the path of employee housing units, the building does need some TLC at some point, regardless of its use.
Jen, could you speak to that, please? That alternative basically means keeping it as a city office use, right? And how much money would be required to maintain that use, which I consider the logical alternative here?
Rob might be able to talk to numbers, but some of the issues that, you know, the mechanical's at the end of its life.
So we built both. So the old powerhouse and then also the Mountain Rescue Building, both were in the Facility Master Plan, where we had a long-range assessment done, looking out, I think it was a 15-year outlook for what the building's needed. And the budget for the old powerhouse was built on that and escalated. The Mountain Rescue Building here for waterproofing, new roof, windows, new mechanicals, some lighting fixture upgrades in 2017 was estimated at $266,000. It's been significant escalation since then, but that gives you an idea.
And Sarah, I think you mentioned something about a basement foundation repair to me in the past.
There are some questions about the foundation here and its ability for the snow loading. The foundation is undersized for the square footage, is the best way I know to describe it.
It's the same, same issue we just talked about with the old powerhouse. You bring in the snow, the snow load, I can't, what are the numbers? So snow load maybe 30?
Yeah, it was like 25.
Designed currently to 25 to 30 pounds per square foot, and we have to bring that up to 70, I think is the current code.
Okay. I'm still, I'm still struggling with this concept of having to do that.
So regardless of the use in this building, just like the powerhouse, it's work that needs to be done for the safety of the occupants, based upon what your code says. So no matter, regardless what use you put in either of these buildings you've talked about tonight, they both have the same problem based upon when they were built and how they were constructed.
Understood, but there's lots of buildings from this era that have not had to have those structural reinforcements for various reasons, and I'm just curious, you know, what is the trigger of those things?
We are not converting, we're not converting this into housing. We may be able to avoid that.
Right. I guess that's my ultimate question. So, Rob, are you and Jen, are you comfortable throwing out a ballpark number based on escalations and based on what you see as the scope on what it would cost to maintain it as offices?
No.
But it sounds like it's a fraction of what the 2.3 million for housing conversion is.
Yes.
Then, I mean, my direction is very simple. I'm not interested in the city undertaking yet another development project with significant risks. I'd like to minimize the amount of work here, keep it as offices. I don't think that there's a reasonable ROI for three bedrooms here at all, especially given the risks, and I propose we maintain the office use.
How does that impact the city? Obviously, housing, crucial office space, this office space in particular. You know, given our last discussion around the powerhouse and office space there, Sarah, how does, how does, how does it fit into one category or the other?
Sure, this office space here does not meet the standards you set for city offices back when you look at the 2016 facilities, 15 facilities master plan. So it is substantially, if you're not familiar, office space is graded on an A to a D scale. Typically, I would put this building D+, C-, most notably, it is extremely cold in this building. So when this was built, it wasn't insulated in the panabode. Most panabodes weren't never insulated. And so that's an issue with this, as well as the current windows. Those are things that can be fixed as office space as well, so I don't want those to be barriers. I think the other thing that's key is the direction we have consistently received since at least 2016 has been to consolidate these offices for operational efficiencies. And then when we came back to the council, I think it was in 2019 about this building, that is when we asked, we said, do you want to sell it? Do you want to turn it over to community use? Do you want to turn it into housing? Do you want to keep it as offices? And the direction we got was to turn it over to employee housing, notably because of maintaining the historic significance of the panabode, rather than turning it into 150 fund housing because we understood that this particular historic resource may have a lot higher maintenance cost on the exterior than one would be with a typical 150 ownership or rental property.
Thank you for that. Comments, questions? Sam?
Yeah, I very much appreciate Bill's comments on this, but, you know, thinking about the money we just spent to buy some units in the ABC and the importance of employee housing, and even with the 20% contingency, I feel very comfortable turning this into employee housing. And even with the 20% contingency, I feel very comfortable turning this into employee housing.
Thanks, Sam. John?
Two more units of employee housing on the town side of the roundabout. I think that's a win win. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Ward, any input, questions?
Yeah, I have heartburn about the cost of this for employee housing. I think employee housing is probably. The best use for this unless it could possibly use be used for storage. Yeah, and I looked at the memo about. An evaluation of this from the June information only about delisting this as a. Aspen Modern and I think that we're, we have to live with it that it is Aspen Modern and everything that goes along with that. The only question I had through this memo was. What did we get for? Converting it, listing it as Aspen Modern. There's a negotiation phase or that there are incentives. What did the city get? In exchange for designating it Aspen Modern?
I think if, I haven't looked at that memo in a while, so sorry, but my recollection is that. When we talked about Aspen Modern, we, the the city, excuse me, the city, when it talked about Aspen Modern. It volunteered a number of buildings, including this one, to go. On the Aspen Modern register to basically say the city is subject to these requirements also, so.
Yeah, this one definitely gives me heartache on. Three bedrooms for two point, I think I put in my notes 2.3 million dollars was the bottom line. But I think that we, two units within the urban growth boundary within the roundabout. It's only going to cost more in the future, so I would support the use for workforce housing, 505 housing.
Thanks, Ward. My quick question for you is in construction like this, if we're moving forward with making a housing, do we remove this from the property? And then do the site work and then bring the building back? Do we, it'll kind of stay there and we'll work around it?
We're gonna work in it.
Yeah, yeah, dig it. Okay. I'm supportive of moving forward. Bill, I respect your comments. Thank you so much for them. I. Be happy to see people living there.
So we have clarity then is to increase the budget. Can you back up a slide, please? I need to read those numbers. Increase the project budget and and to the 2.314. Million and you'll see that in spring supplemental of 24 for that additional because we do not have time to get it in. For a technical adjustment this fall.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Rob. Good to see you, man.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Tyler.
Thanks, Tyler.
Counsel, while she's finishing setting up, just a present reminder, we bring this to you sometimes in work session, sometimes just an info only if it doesn't have a lot of changes. So we felt like this time it would be with the two new counselors. At the table, it would be good to bring it to you in work session and then our, we anticipate having the language finalized so it gets adopted in December of this year. So that there's clarity entering into the legislative session in 2024 about the city council's position on behalf of the organization on. On the number of issues that you find inside this document. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jen Newton, Senior Project Manager in the City Manager's Office. And with me this evening is Tara Nelson, our Senior Paralegal. We're here this evening to present the policy agenda, which is a document that's been annually adopted since 2019. As a guideline for regional, state and federal policy. This document is important for a number of reasons, some of which Sarah just went over. City council members who are the lone representative of an organization might be called upon to vote on a policy, policy, policy position on the spot. So this document is also very helpful to you. It helps our state legislators to understand our principles and priorities that are important to the city of Aspen as they represent us at the state Capitol. This document helps staff members respond to the many requests that the city receives during legislative session. When we're asked to weigh in on the impact of a specific bill to the city. Or potentially regionally, as we did last year with Senate Bill 213. This gives the ability to advocate for or against a bill where the city already has a broad policy position. Often, we don't have time during the swift moving legislative session to bring specific questions before council as a whole. This document helps us align with other municipalities and counties in our region. And there have been times that other like minded communities have reached out to us for our support on a matter that's important to their jurisdiction. And part of the reason that we're here this evening is because we have a meeting set with two legislators and so Senator Will and Representative Velasco will be here. On Wednesday in advance of the legislative session and this document will help to guide that conversation. So quickly, I wanted to go through the principles in the document, won't read all of this to you, but. You know, there are certainly alignment with the council goals and other policy documents that you have. For example, the area Aspen Community Plan. And. There are also priorities that are in the document, again, that have connection to the city council goals and and our values overall. And again, I won't read this whole list to you, but certainly happen to talk about any one of these. There are just a few additions of or changes. To the document from the document that was approved earlier this year to set for 2023. So there's language acknowledging that council may choose to take a position and support an opposed unless amended position. Or a position of oppose on specific legislation and that is also reactive to the the land use bill, Senate Bill 213. And House Bill 1255, we thought it was important to add this to the document going forward. The city has also hired Baudich and Castle Public Affairs to assist us during the 2024 legislative session, so this document acknowledges that. And then there are just two additions related to climate action and the resource conservation components on page 13. So. Part of it related to the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. So just making it clear that we're interested in pursuit of those dollars and that. That we'd like to see eligible projects funded if we can. So this helps us as we may ask for. A specific advocacy component or as we're going for grants. So having this documented is also helpful to that. And then I just wanted to go through it briefly. So the discussion really is yours to talk about the policy agenda in advance of the resolution that will come. Later, I was going to say later this month, but not quite yet, in December. And with that, we're open to any questions you might have.
Bill?
Thanks. Thanks, Jen and Tara. I'm appreciative of the of the purpose of this document and the effort that you put into it. I I'm really appreciative that you have a lobbyist firm now because I think that takes a lot of work off your plate that I don't think is the highest and best use of your time. And when I say you, I mean collectively, the staff that has been working on these efforts in the past. But I do appreciate and understand the need for us to be involved in some of these issues, but I just don't think that we are the best at doing it directly nor. Is that the best use of of your time. So I think that's a great step in the right direction. Philosophically, I think that we should be focused only on issues that specifically affect Aspen and that is, that Aspen specifically has purview over. So some of the the things that I'm going to dive into specifically here, I think, get beyond the scope of Aspen. Either in the types of services that you're talking about advocating for or we're talking about advocating for. Or the types of funding and and I will be more specific. I I just think we got to stick to the stuff that's really what we are about as a municipality and not things that the council is, I'm sorry, the county. Is and should be responsible for. I just think that we need to narrow our focus and and do a good job on what we are. And should be focused on. So some specific items. And and some of these are questions, some of them are comments, but under the health, housing and human services section. We talk about public safety. Obviously, we have a police department. But you also mentioned the sheriff's department, the fire department, mountain rescue. You know, those are not city departments. I understand that we have relationships with them, but I do think that they have their own needs, priorities. Funding requirements, regulation interests, and we can't possibly advocate on their behalf. It's it's impossible for us to do so. So I I would request that we narrow that to the city's interests in that. Doesn't mean that we won't and shouldn't work collaboratively with those departments. It just means that in terms of of. Regional, state and federal policy work, it's impossible for us to advocate on their behalf or or be interested in their behalf. Similarly, some of the health and well being things that we talk about, you know. Local and regional public health agencies, obviously, we have a a public health department in the city, but we are not. Responsible for the hospital and nor can we advocate. For the hospital. Women's reproductive care. You know, I I don't think that this is the place to discuss that. I think we've learned recently what can happen when we wade into issues that are beyond the scope of the city of Aspen and. That's certainly not one that I think we should be involved in. Not saying I disagree with anyone's in this room's perspective on that. I just don't think that that's any of our business as a municipality. Fiscal responsibility section. Could you please explain to me in the last bullet point, it says, the city of Aspen believes it is critical to the health of our economy to address. The state revenue structure that restricts the state's ability to respond to changing economic conditions, including Tabor Amendment 23 and the Gallagher Amendment.
Sure, in principle, yeah, no worries. You're looking for the, the, the larger issue is is that. Gallagher and Tabor both affect the ability of a local municipality to fund its needs as set by its community through its own voters' actions. And so we're supportive anytime that the state looks at putting a constitutional amendment out to. Reduce some of that restriction to the benefit of local communities to have local control.
Could you give me an example, please? Maybe something that has recently been discussed?
An example, I'll give you an example that affects many of our value partners that if they had this restriction removed. That it would help them. And so it's not going to be specifically Tabor, but I'm going to use real estate transfer taxes. So many communities in Colorado are trying to figure out how to finance these very expensive projects, just like us. We have one of the highest REITs in the state and we still have to reach to fund them. And so we, in support of local control, say it's not of the statewide's interest to say whether a local community chooses to tax itself in any manner. Whether it's a real estate tax, sales tax, property tax, excise tax, any other form of taxation. That should be a local choice within that jurisdiction. The same principle applies with Tabor and Gallagher. So again, it's about local community members choosing what's right for their community rather than the state dictating and taking away a tool.
Thanks for that explanation. I struggle with that one because I think that that there's some really big concepts in there that. We may find ourselves in agreement or disagreement on, you know, the example you just gave. I actually think it's a very good thing that the state does not allow any more real estate transfer taxes. I think that they, that that can really stifle. A real estate economy. Or a community economy in a lot of circumstances. I'm not saying that the evidence in Aspen. Shows that the real estate economy is stifled here because that's clearly not true, but there are. Ways in which that could happen elsewhere and it could happen in the city of Aspen. I mean, imagine if there was a 20% real estate transfer tax enacted here. I I do think that would be very destructive to our, to our economy. So I guess I struggle with that section because there's such, there's so many large conversations within that one and I would want to make sure that we're aligned. On those before advocating on behalf of the community. DEIA. I I've become increasingly concerned about the negative effects of DEIA. I think on paper, it's all sounds wonderful. I I do think that there's some real negative consequences to all the effort that people have put into DEIA. In that it it eliminates the drive to be excellent. And I think in the long run, that's not a positive. Goal and it's not a positive attribute of of what the program is trying, nobly trying to accomplish or I shouldn't say the program. The the initiatives, these initiatives DEIA are trying to accomplish. So I shared with Sarah an article that I read that I think sums that up really. Nicely and interestingly, I'm happy to share that with others, but I'm quite skeptical about DEI efforts lately. The election section, could you please clarify to me what you mean by this sentence? However, the validity of our vote can be deteriorated by other states when it comes to final selection of the Senate and the Congress.
Counselor Good, can I respond?
Please.
First, I'd just like to respond to some of the initial comments you said and a lot of the context that you're pulling out has been specifically included in this agenda from previous council members. So I just want to preface this, this is a guiding document and this is why we're having these healthy conversations. So what you've spelled out thus far has specifically been inserted by council members that have previously been seated at this council. And this election. Statement that you just brought up is one. So that is coming directly from a former council member who wanted this included exactly. How they felt at that time and wanted to be put in there along with the DEIA clause. That was not an initial priority or principle in this document. For the last three or four years and other language that you've specifically brought up as it relates. To your concerns are brought up by specific council members. So in response to that question, that's from a specific council member who had. And it does need to be agreed upon by those on.
Sure, so the the basis of that request, which was approved by the four other counselors, was looking at the 20. Presidential election, 20.
It was.
Twenty twenty. We're all running it together. The 2020 election and when there was a lot of debate about the. In in society, the American society, around whether elections were handled properly. And the, as we see now, still two years later, ongoing litigation around that. And so the this statement was agreed to on the basis of understanding that. Even if we take care of what we have here in Colorado, there are outside forces that could be detrimental to Colorado's electoral system. And our ability to have effective representation at the federal level.
Okay, I appreciate that, and don't disagree with that piece of it. I do struggle with sort of that larger concept that I talked about, about focusing of what affects us and what really is important to us. You know, some of the, some of the examples, I suppose they are, that are listed in here, like gerrymandering, redistricting, open primaries. We don't have this in Aspen. I don't know why we would be advocating on behalf of that. It's outside of the scope of our responsibility, so.
I just need to clarify, like, redistricting absolutely could affect us at both the state level and the federal level. Those are very real things that could impact Picken County, including Aspen.
No, I guess I was thinking about it in terms of the city's, because we don't have voting districts here in the municipal elections. So I appreciate what you're saying. I would like, I would ask the team to look at this section specifically about, and try to focus on the things that really do impact us, and redistricting may be one of those. Some of these others, I don't think they do. Climate Action and Resource Conservation. The middle of the first paragraph, you talk about the "Aspen Sustainability Action Plan reflects the city's new science-based targets for greenhouse gas emission reductions of 63% by 2030 and zero carbon by 2050, along with the necessary actions to achieve these goals and realize a sustainable future for our community." I'm not supportive of these targets, not because I'm not supportive of reducing greenhouse gas emissions as a city thoughtfully or responsibly. I just think these are totally unachievable goals, and I don't like working towards goals that are unachievable and create behaviors that are unrealistic and undesirable. So I'm not supportive of that statement within here. Additionally, in this section, the second paragraph talks about things like abandoned coal mines in the West. Again, way outside the scope of Aspen. We have no abandoned coal mines in Aspen, as far as I'm aware, in the city of Aspen. And I think that we should focus on what we can control and does directly affect us.
So when I hear this theme of what directly affects us, I just want to bring up some examples that might be worth discussing on the council. One would be the Thompson Divide. Does it directly impact Aspen? That's up to you to debate. However, we've been a Staltworth supporter of trying to eliminate certain activities in the Thompson Divide for quality of life for our Valley. Another example is the mining in West Glenwood, where at the request of Glenwood City Council, we were asked for a resolution and support to go to state and federal officials to help limit what was in that mine permit, again, thinking about the health of the region and the benefits of that. So I just want to give you some examples of where some of this language really matters and helping us understand in our interactions with these other places about whether those are things that we can potentially advance.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I don't disagree with what we have done necessarily on those specific items. I just, you know, we fund CORE. CORE is working on Thompson Divide. CORE is working on the abandoned coal mines. You know, people who are passionate about that in our community are very generous with CORE and other organizations that do that work. I think that if there is something like this that is beyond the scope of what is directly affecting Aspen, then it should come to this table. I don't want to spend our staff time and our community resources advocating on things that are bigger than Aspen. That's my ultimate point. That doesn't mean I don't agree with them, and it doesn't mean I don't see value in it and understand it. I just think it should come back here when it's outside of the scope of the usual and the direct. Telecommunications section. All three of these bullet points that concern telemunicipally owned and managed telecommunications utilities, mobile and broadband telecommunications services, and the like, give me concern. You know, we are in a limited capacity in that business. This, this, to me, feels like we're advocating to bring another utility under our umbrella. I just want to make sure that is not the intention and not our interest at all. I do understand we have the internet service that supports our crucial needs. I get that. I understand the value of it. I don't know that it's our responsibility to make sure that there's equitable and affordable access to high-speed, quality, mobile, and broadband telecommunications services, both within the city limits and outside the city limits. So this goes back to my initial point about focus on what's directly impacting the city of Aspen and our citizens. I think that was it for me. Thank you.
If I may, I just would note that the, that second bullet related to municipal control, it does have an effect for our utilities. And so I just wanted to point that out, that there, that there's a shot clock for how long we have to approve those types of uses in the right way. And it's just one thing that does actually impact our utilities that might also be in the right way.
Could you exemplify that for me?
Well, there's probably somebody else who's better to do that in the room. But, you know, my understanding of how these happen is that there's a certain amount of time that you have to approve them. But if you miss anything.
Sorry to interrupt, Jen. Approve what?
I'll use the example of 5G technology.
Right.
We were federally, every community was federally mandated on a shot clock. It's unreasonable shot clock in alignment with the character and aesthetic standards of this community. At this, some point, we're going to be looking at really ugly 5Gs towers that are out of character for height and placement in our community. We have been trying to steer those pieces of equipment to places that are more obscure for now, but there will come a point where the utilities, the private utility market doesn't want to play with us, and will demand our right of way for it, and we have very little recourse. So that's an example.
I think that's great, and I'm supportive of that. What I'm not supportive of is like us trying to make sure that someone living on the backside of Aspen Mountain has high-speed internet. It's not the city of Aspen's job in my mind. So some of these things give me that type of concern.
Sure, and so, for example, the one about ensure equitable and affordable access to high-speed and quality mobile broadband telecommunications services. An example of that in action is our work with Eagle County, Picken County, Basalt, and Snowmass Village, where we brought additional fiber capacity all the way up the valley. And so we aren't necessarily a service provider, but we all made some agreements on how our right of way could be used so that it is available for purchase in the private market, thereby inducing more providers to create ideally a competitive situation. So I think that we operate in this space pretty well. I do know some members of council would like us to start another utility around these services, but there's not been a majority to direct us to investigate that in more full, and that's where we're at.
Got it. So to me, it sounds like most of the efforts that you've actually taken on, I'm very supportive of. I think maybe some of the language in here needs to be more specific. That's the end of my comments, though. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, so in that, Bill had a couple of his comments that were also, you know, somewhat requesting of editing or amending. I'll remind you of those if you need me to, but I'll take your comments first, and we can come back to it, that kind of thing. John, first?
I just wanted to say thanks for what I thought was a really well-written document. Looks like it took a lot of time and effort to put it together. And also, I want to talk about regionalism. I think it's, especially in this day and age, it's super important to be involved regionally. I'll give you three examples. Housing is not going to be solved by Aspen alone. We're going to need all the communities up and down the valley to help us with it. Transportation, same thing. We're going to need communities up and down the valley and beyond to help us with that. And lastly, water quality. We all need to work together on water quality to make sure that this diminishing resource, we're going to have enough of it for everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, John. John, did you hear anything in Bill's comments that you wanted to support at this time? Or are you happy with the language that you've heard in the document at this time?
I'm happy with the document at this time.
All right, Ward, and then Sam.
Yeah, regionalism is one thing that, that I think we have to broaden our scope out a little bit because what happens throughout, what the state says and mandates and gives prohibitions from the local municipalities for changing land use codes, for example, building. I think we need to keep an eye on that. So I really believe in tackle what John says. You know, it's like, we don't have a wall around Aspen where external features or external conditions stop. The climate change definitely doesn't stop at the city limits, nor does the need for housing or transportation. I, I've changed my thoughts on, in the years that I've been on council, to zoom out and to be concerned with what's happening regionally and throughout the state. We have to keep an eye on these things because we saw the last, last year, how some stuff got pushed through at the last minute with a very limited timeline and without having a clearly defined legislative agenda. Those could have gotten, I know they raised a lot of interest in a short period of time, but I think it's important to have those. As far as, I understand, I think that DEIA is, I have to support it. What we do to the least of our community, we do to all of us. We have to support and give everybody equal access. Bill, I'd be interested in the article that you had sent to Sarah to help balance my opinion on that. But in broadband, I think increasingly broadband access is considered an essential utility. We have two utilities that are enterprise funds right now with the, well, we have utilities. We have the golf course that's an enterprise fund. Water and electric are managed by and run by the city. And I think I understand, Bill, that, at least is the way I interpret it, is that the state or the government being in competition with private, such as Comcast, Xfinity, or Pathways, I think it's called, with private entities. I think Glenwood has set an example of bringing high-speed broadband to the homes. I think that there's a, there are a number of municipalities that have seen great opportunities where broadband is readily available. So I know I've been talking about this for years and haven't gotten council support, but I believe that broadband is an essential utility, and everybody should be able to access it. And if private suppliers are, make it inaccessible or unattainable to all members, that we should be looking at entering this arena. You know, and I was, when I was going through this, I'm going, well, what are, what are the two new members of our council going to feel about it, and the election issue? I have to say, Bill, I pretty much anticipated what your objections were going to be, and I had some objections to some of the election provisions that were put in there previously. Yeah, I think on elections, we just should focus locally. I don't know that we need to enter into the arena of, as a council and all those other, whether it's online voting or any of the other things that have come up in the past. But I, I do feel that regionalism is a way that we have to approach some of these broader problems, and so I support that. And I think that it's, it really well represents what our values are on council, but particularly what they were when these were written, that there's some different values that are expressed here that may not be valued by this council. But thank you for the work, and I think it's important that we have this agenda because of the short timeline when we may have to make decisions.
Thanks, Ward. Sam?
Yeah, thank you for this work. I was wondering, do we hear at council when the city decides to lobby on something? I know we were lobbying on like the House bills, but like, when do we decide to lobby? Because this is a large scope, which means I feel like you'd be lobbying on everything the state legislature does.
In response, Counsel Rose, we have never, since my tenure of time and since a policy agenda's been adopted, hired a lobbyist. And we have just done it in-house internally, relative to trying to establish a relationship with our delegates and representatives. So in response, I don't recall that we have. Sarah may have a different response, but.
Yeah, I think part of it is, is not that we lobby on every one of these, but we pay attention to what's happening at the State House and at the federal level that might be in conflict with what you say in this document or might be highly supportive of it to determine when to, to, to take those actions in terms of letter writing, or testimony, or other steps forward. And so when that happens, the, the council, the general process is, is that if there's something in here after it's adopted, that we think, an issue comes to us that clear aligns with it, a staff member will likely write a draft letter, and it is reviewed by the mayor and signed by the mayor on behalf of the organization, being in line with something, the policy document. All five of you have already had an opportunity to weigh in on and vote on. The other piece is, is that typically, we, we can have staff give testimony occasionally, but generally, we try to keep that with elected officials providing testimony. So it's electeds talking to electeds. We think that's the most effective way in Colorado to affect the state legislature. We might put staff more towards testifying on something related to this into a, like a rulemaking committee of one of the regulatory agencies of the state. So that, that happens. The other thing is, everything that we do in terms of letters or written testimony that we submit on any bill is published on the city's website, so it's available to everyone, including you, to be able to see. And then typically, we provide, after a letter is executed by the mayor, that letter is provided to all council members, so you're aware that it has gone out.
And of recent memory, since, once again, new, I remember we sort of lobbied on the House bills as far as local control over like housing. Have we, what else have we lobbied on in recent memory? Like, I'm looking at it as just like, Bill brings up women's reproductive rights, and I kind of smile at it, being like, are we ever really going to lobby on an abortion bill in the Colorado Legislature? Or do we have it in there just because we are showing our values?
So that's up to you. At this point, we have never lobbied on that specific issue. But there are counselors, the majority of counselors have felt that that was an important representation of the majority of the community's position on that issue, and to be able to state that in with everything else. Some examples of other lobbying that we have done is this, Aspen gets called out somewhat regularly in the state legislature as a target of certain bills, and so we work hard to get our name off those lists. We have one actually that we know is being drafted right now that targets us. It's not too consequential, but we are already working on seeing about getting our name off the list of that additional regulatory burden that's not being placed on other communities. This has to do with taxation and taxation reporting. There's other times we've lobbied on, the land use is the biggest, but we've also lobbied quite a bit in the climate action arena, particularly at the federal level. And we have been asked to regularly through our membership with CC4CA. So, say it for me, Colorado Climate Action Co.
Communities for Climate Action.
Yeah. Sorry, I only know it by the acronym. I rarely say the whole thing. So that's an example. The other example is with CAST, when CAST is polling representatives to understand what's the position of mountain towns in general on something. They have this resource to reflect on, to figure out where Aspen is at, or that we'll use to answer that, and we'll decide whether to lobby individually or through CAST. use to answer that, and we'll decide whether to lobby individually or through CAST. Just a strategy for the certain bills and based upon who the sponsors are.
No, I guess just my feeling on this is that it's very real, but also, it seems like more value and virtue signaling, and that word's always used in a derogatory manner, but it really does feel like virtue signaling more than not. And with that, I'm okay keeping it as it is, especially this year and seeing how things play out, but it sounds like a lot of the requests we do are not innocuous, but very much more about like local control than like any of the other, I don't know, somewhat random things that we put in this document. Like, I don't think we're gonna talk about DEIA in the lobbying sense and whatnot, so.
But we will talk about it in terms of accessibility, for sure. We're making sure people have the proper accessibility to access services specifically.
And that bill comes effective June 2024.
Yeah, so we have a bill right now, for example, that we're dealing with, that's about accessibility, and so it's requiring a redevelopment of all of our web portals and changes to every PDF document that we store electronically for the community. Right? We'd much rather be at the table saying, let's find a way to work this out together, than just be having state regulations handed down to us. It's been a very expensive process to comply with this unfunded mandate. So, that's why these things are in there, is because we absolutely need the ability to be able to say back to a state agency whether this fits or it doesn't fit. When we didn't have this document, we weren't unable to respond, and that's the worst position we could put our community in, is to not use the power of the voice of Aspen and things that affect the people that live here. So, that's why you might feel like it's broad, but we will pull those pieces based upon the legislation we're being presented with, or we're asked to help draft or review drafts of, to help inform it.
Okay, fair enough. I appreciate that response more than any of the others, and I mean, what I care most about in this bill is local control, because that's what, I'd rather discuss it like locally, because there's only so much control we can have going to like the state legislature anyway. I can only imagine what lobbying, people that have already made up their minds is like, anything, so, yeah.
Thanks, Sam. You know, I was going to give a couple of things that perhaps fall into these categories as well. On a state level, you know, council members and mayors for Aspen have testified on things like flavored tobacco bans, psilocybin medical uses.
Plastics.
I feel like I'm on $100,000 pyramid right now.
Plastics.
Plastics, and so, so, so there are a number of items that we do actually have our voice heard on, but overall, you're, I would say, your assessment is right. Most often, we are fighting for local control, because that is, in the state of Colorado, with home rule municipal charters, with state oversight and the like, those lines sometimes get blurred, and different people are trying to make different decisions for not their constituents. So, anyway, thank you for your input on it. I'm going to say thank you as well. I don't have any edits. I appreciate Bill bringing to the table some questions around different items in here. You know, again, I'm not going to touch on each one, but I think that each one is in here for a reason, and a good and balanced reason. I don't think that this policy agenda in any way sets us off on a direction that is not in keeping with our community. And this is fairly new practice, having on-the-hill lobbyists that are paying attention and working for us is going to be another new step. So, we're learning about this as we go. I can't help but feel like over the last couple of years with the pandemic and with some of the impacts that our state has seen, some of the discussions that are going on at a state level, that, you know, perhaps we're in a heightened state for this. Perhaps this policy agenda is the right thing for the right time, but as we move forward, maybe some of these issues will see resolve, and this document is not necessarily super active, but still there as a framework for, as you said, our values that we hold here in Aspen. In my time serving on this side of the table, you know, over the last twenty-something years, I have found that this policy agenda has really focused us, and it's given us the ability to have communication and conversation within our organization before going out and representing a point of view on any legislative matter. So, for me, it's been tremendously helpful. I think it keeps us focused. I think the bulk of the work on this is done, Bill, and, and, and so now we're really seeing the fruits of the labor of the last couple of years of getting this together. This is a new year. This is a new legislative session, so we'll see how it goes forward. Trying to think if there's anything specific. Yeah, you know, I, again, I respect Bill's comments on each, each area. I think there's different opinions about some of the, the language, but I think what we see here is support from council for moving this forward.
So, just to clarify, are we looking for any edits to the document before we bring it by resolution for adoption?
I have not heard any. The suggestions around removing women's reproductive rights is a statement I didn't hear. Support for fiscal responsibility and the taxation questions, I didn't hear support for election rewording, I did not. Environmental goals, I think a lot of us share some sentiment about aspirational goals and where we're trying to get, but I think that we're leaving those in place as targets and objectives. And then for telecommunications, using broadband as an example, I think that we are still looking for community-wide access on an equal and equitable playing field. So, I don't hear any edits at this time.
I do want to make just one comment. As we kind of go through this process and vetted throughout the session, we don't just boilerplate, give a answer to every entity or to every organization or to every issue that may present itself, but this is a guiding document that we do look upon, conversate upon, have feedback with staff and with the council member if needed, but you're always welcome to contact Jen or I, and we do like to put our stamp of approval on things that really matter to Aspen. If you look at our policy agenda that is published on the web, we don't just unilaterally, you know, provide correspondence for anybody that asks. It does feel like we thoroughly vet it, and it's important to us, and it is what we care about locally within our organization, to put our logo on it, so.
Do you, do we share this? There's a couple of meetings this week with some of our representatives and stuff. Do we share it directly with them? Do we give?
A lot of times, we give it to their local staff or their liaisons or their, in person, it's great to have that as a tool and a mechanism. I mean, we can give them what's adopted now, but that's not a present what we've discussed today.
Right.
I think the other benefit of is, is that it helps other municipalities understand whether Aspen could be an ally to their, their work as well. Are they experiencing a similar issue that we reference in here? So, they use it, it's used as a screening tool, and I also think it helps the community understand, why do we even spend time on this?
Thanks. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
See you tomorrow.
Thank you.
See you Wednesday as well. All right, we want to say thank you to Grassroots. We are reconvening tomorrow at 5:00 PM for a regular meeting. If there's any citizen comments, we invite you to come on down to City Hall at 5:00 PM. You will kick off the agenda tomorrow. Thank you, Grassroots. Have a great evening.